Let's call this meeting with the Harriman City Council to order October the 2nd, 2018. Before we get started, we'll have a prayer by Councilman Wright followed by a pledge of release for the flag. Councilman Wright?
Yeah. Would you join me? Heavenly Father, may your spirit guide us tonight and direct the business that we be conducting on behalf of the citizens of Harriman. May your wisdom and guidance govern all the actions that we are taking tonight. May the ones that we make be acceptable to not only you but to people that we represent. Bless those who are present tonight and all who serve us by providing the services that are needed to protect our citizens. Watch over those who are in harm's way each and every day. We're thankful and appreciate you for all of your blessings. And... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cover up police.
Darryl Cook.
Here.
Betty Holly.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Ken Yen-Bee.
Here.
Sam Russell.
Here.
Lonny Rapp.
Here. Our form. Motion to approve the minutes of the September 18th, 2018 meeting.
I'm making my first motion.
Second. Councilman Johnson, second. Councilman Cook, Councilman Johnson.
No, sir.
Councilman Johnson. The floor is open for discussion. Cover up police.
Darryl Cook.
Yes.
Betty Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Ken Yen-Bee.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonny Rapp.
Yes.
Motion carries. The motion to pay the salaries.
Motion.
Motion, Councilman Russell.
Second.
Second, Councilman Mead, Councilman Russell.
No, sir.
Councilman Mead.
No, sir.
The floor is open for discussion. Cover up police.
Darryl Cook.
Yes.
Betty Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Ken Yen-Bee.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonny Rapp.
Yes.
Motion carries. At this time, we'll hear from anyone out in the audience. If you'd like to address council, please stand, state your name, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Barry Paulson. My husband, Myers Paulson, we're Dark Horse Entertainment, and we're working towards the Tennessee Pirate Fest. It's the third annual Tennessee Pirate Fest that opens the October 13th, 14th, 20th, and 21st. So before I go through my one page, can we show the little video? One of our actors has a professional video on the front, so he did a commercial video for us.
Captain Jones, I appreciate your hospitality. I don't think you'd bring me aboard your ship, but that reckoning would be a lot of fun.
Captain Morgan, do not be as dumb as you sound. What? I propose an accord. I have a map, do I still...
I say... I have a barrel off the tortillas.
In your ship, the bond deal, choice forces with mine, a dead reckoning, with your blast through any opposition from the brave lady.
Well, it's a pretty plan, Jones, but that pain in the backside, our mad Jack McNair, has decimated me cruel with a couple of recent engagements.
I mean, too. So we got to pick up a crew. Ah-ha! Port Royal, get the other way. Ah-ha! Of course.
You know that? I gave you a word of happiness. That's the whole point of mad Jack. It'd be suicide.
Oh, wait, wait, wait! Lady vodka! But all happened now that the governor of Port Royal himself is throwing a birthday party. And every year, the bullcracks hungry in the hall, including pirates. Oh, but wait, that's not all. Port Royal's a fun town.
There's delicious food to fill your belly, cold beverages, including beer, rock and music to set your toes at happy, the most amazing stage shows, craft shops with wondrous wear, games, amusements, and much more.
Excellent. Ah-ha! Pray, secretary, when is this celebrating?
Oh, mate, ask the best one. It's for two weekends in October, the 13th and 14th, and then the 20th and the 21st. The governor likes everyone to get their pirate on, eh? Cheers to that, yeah!
There's a delay here, but there's not a delay when you're looking at it. Okay. So we'd like to thank the city council because we've been working with you for the last several years to put on these festivals and bring tourists to Harriman and Rome County. And so that brings in more money into the city and to the county, and we greatly appreciate, you know, to do this with you. As I said, the dates are the 13th, 14th, 20th, and 21st. The location is 550 Fisk Road, so near Fisk Heights. The ticket prices are $16 for ages 13 and up, $8 for eight and four, or five to 12, free for kids, and there's free parking. So as you can see, it's just a fun, interactive festival, lots of comedy, lots of Celtic and pirate music, and there's costume characters. And so we've been working for the last several months to train local actors so that they can interact with people, and it's a really nice way for them to have more performance opportunities. So we've been advertising Harriman. We spent almost $9,000 just on this festival. We spent a lot more with the medieval fair, the billboards, and we were in Rome County, Discover Rome County, with our billboard graphic. And we were just published in the Rome County News with our press release. And we also advertise as Southern Biker because people that ride motorcycles like to come to different festivals. So we try to, you know, get people where they are. And so if you would like, we're having open to the media. If they want to come and take pictures at our final dress rehearsal this Saturday between 3:00 and 5:00, it'll be a little informal, but if anybody on the city council wants to come, there'll be beverages, and you can interact with the characters. And just wanted to know if it's possible to have the road repaired before we'll be open on the 13th, because of the rain and some of the ruts. That way, it's nicer for the patrons, so. But anyway, we just appreciate you to do this and hope that you'll support it. We're not yet self-sustaining, and so it's really important for if we can continue, if people will come and we'll invite their friends and help support the activity because we want to be able to continue. So, any questions?
I'll just make a statement real quick. I was out there last year, and it's just amazing to watch the kids go around and interact and watch the different shows. I think it's a great draw for the kids, and we appreciate y'all looking at them.
Thank you for working, you guys. That's great.
We're also, we have a trail, a little walking...
Trick or treat.
...but it's like a trick or treat, trick or treat trail, but it's kind of GPG, you know, the skeletons and stuff, they all have ping pong balls in. It's kind of a comedy thing, but it's, they're going to be handing out candy to anybody that they're that tall.
Everyone will come, and I have some custom posters that have a coupon for $2 off drinks, so pass those out. Thank you.
Thank you, y'all. Thank you for what you do out there. We're actually getting your votes up here. You may also like to address council.
Not really sure if I'm supposed to, I'm here to build my property and kind of turn a residential property into a commercial property.
It's on the agenda.
I could build warehousing on my land.
It's on the agenda.
Am I supposed to speak now? Okay. I just want to make sure.
You may also like to address council. Now, we'll go into committee reports, HUB.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items. The contract with Stewart's Construction was executed, and they began work on the new building remodel last week. The lighting project downtown is nearing completion. Line Crew is still awaiting delivery of one pole. I understand, and they should be able to get that wrapped up. The bridge work in front of the Crystals on the highway heading south, that's well underway. We are still in the design work with our engineers on that project. The two CDVG grant water projects are ongoing. Phase one is nearing completion. They began some patchwork and paving on that. Should be done real soon. Phase two has begun already in the Howard and Topperly Avenue areas. And from there, they'll move on to Jerry Duncan, Shepherd Lake area. And lastly, the clarifier rehab project at our wastewater plant, that's getting underway. We have a pre-con, pre-construction meeting this Thursday with Southern Star. That's all I have.
Do you have anything for Harriman HUB? We're excited to see what the business looks like. I noticed they've got the dumpster out there, and they've started work. I went through it, I guess, the end of last week when they had to make most of everything out of there, and it's real exciting to see what's going to be in that building.
Excited to see.
Fire department.
Mayor, you all, I got the copy of the monthly stats in front of you all. The only other two things I would like to report on would be the firefighter memorial is almost complete. I'd like to have a couple of things touching it up. I'm going to do a ceremony here in a few weeks. I want you guys to know a few days ahead of time before we do it. The next thing, we got the backup engine back. It's stationed back in service. And I just want to say thank you all for that new engine. I wasn't here last month to give my own little report, and I want you to know, we really do appreciate that new engine. It's doing real well. I'll take any questions.
Anything for the fire chief.
I just had comment on your report, the, all that training, you all have done a ton of training. That's a good thing, but it was interesting to see all that.
Yeah. At the beginning, I had every month. We kind of changed it up. Captain Johnson here does all of our events, putting them in. We've been trying to build emergency reporting software out more where you can have a better report each month.
Sounds good. Everything except for I'm getting, you know, kind of beat up because we ain't got no haunted house, but I understand why. Police department.
Yes, sir. You all have the September monthly stats in front of you that I gave you, and I'd like to report that we have one officer that has been deployed, and she'll be leaving for a year. Today was her last day of work. She leaves Friday to be deployed. Just let y'all know that she will be there. She said she'll be back in a year, so hopefully she'll return.
Sounds good. Anybody have anything for police department?
Thanks, sir.
Cover up police.
Yes, ma'am. I had a tree fall on Wildon Street. Hit a car, so we got cut, and we cut four trees all the way down on Wildon Street. Trem King Drive there by Kelly Oak Store at that street. During the heavy rain, we had three big oaks fall on Bowser Road. Got them cleaned up during all the rain last week. We cut back Long Alley, where it's grown up, over Power Line and everything. Cleaned up the illegal dumping on Bowser Road, same spot that I showed you. They should still dump in there on that private property. We cleaned that 1225, big long ditch on Rutten Road. Cleaned Garrett Street down there where it flood, we had it before it rained. Put up the cable at Rick's Chapel, which is my, Darryl. Our long arm, poor bush hog, it was, clutch went out on it, but he got it going. The brakes on the chipper truck was out. Took a long time to get the parts on it, and we got it going. Got rooms downstairs you want to clean up today. And then on Swamp Pond Road there, we've got a bad spot that came up in it, and I think it just worked wet enough back. I've already contacted Rogers in two to three weeks. They're going to be in here and redo that. If I have anything, just one.
I'd like to say I appreciate getting that, those tires cleaned up and that cable back up. I think that'll keep a lot of trouble from under that bridge. Thank you.
Thank you. And your, your new truck is getting bed fixed on it, or you fixing something?
I am bedding that out. Put the bed on.
Thanks, sir. Library?
Yes. Allred Children's Program, the two different preschool programs we have, and the two homeschool programs, they're all going really well. Actually, they're growing, so that we might need to start splitting them up again, which is a good thing. We still have computer classes going on. Our next two is on genealogy, so if anybody's interested in learning more about how to do genealogy, we will be having them next Thursday at 5:30, and in November, November the 1st, at 5:30. We have a painting party this Thursday at 5:30, if anybody would like to come and paint. We're painting all the pictures, this for adults, and if you don't have a paint, I'll show you now. It's a lot of fun, and we still had a little bit of, not flooding, but of water seeping in in one corner of the downstairs department, which is the new car compartment. Fortunately, Mr. Bass called me and dragged him. So hopefully, hopefully we take care of it, but everything else has been right with all the rain going on. It's no more of all the different directions, just one direction now, so that's a big problem. Thank you.
Anybody have anything for library?
Thank you so much. Cozy enforcer, he's probably with his mother. As everybody knows, David's mom has been in the, was in the accident, and just keep that family in your prayers. And David needs all the encouragement he can get. I talked to him yesterday, and it's, it's rough right now, so just keep in touch.
Dr. Currie?
We've had quite a bit of busy activity since we met last. We've entered the budget in our accounting system. We put together the budget package for the city and HUB to go to the state comptroller. Been delivered to them. We had our audit team here for a week, and when, once they finish with HUB, they'll be preparing financial report, and sent tax forms to Division of Property Assessment, and we're waiting for the download of the files. That's it.
Anybody have anything for court?
Thanks, sir.
See your attorney.
I'll be in court next Tuesday on the delinquents tax matter with Jared Largin, since it came back from the Court of Appeals, we're going before the chancellor on Tuesday, and it's the city's position to ask for a judgment for him to pay his taxes, since the appeal was denied. So I'll let you know what happens.
Anything for the city attorney.
Thank you.
Ms. Crown, see your attorney.
I know council is well aware of this fact, but just to state for the record, earlier this week, we've removed the acting portion of the title from the police chief, and so Baron Tapp is now the police chief for the city of Harriman, so look forward to working with him going forward, and I think he'll do a great job. Challenge was starting off with some vacancies that he didn't anticipate, so he's got his work cut out for him on the front end. Also, we have, on our end, we've executed our copy of the contract with the state for the transportation alternatives program, which is the grant planning that we will use to redo the sidewalks and lighting, beginning at this intersection here where our building is located, going north to the high school. We'll be sending that off to the state, and we'll also very soon be starting the process of preparing engineering services for that project as well. Alan and I will be attending a mandatory workshop in Farragut tomorrow on the local parks and recreation grant that we received for the splash pad. It is mandatory that two people from the city attend that workshop, so we'll, we'll be there tomorrow. The first phase of our new street signs for Run Street are expected to ship on the 5th, and so we should have those in about a week to 10 days, and we'll start putting those up. And also wanted to let you know that as far as recording all of the cameras or working the roof front work at this time, we had a training session the other day on how to access those. You can see the video. We, one little issue that we're still trying to work out as far as being able to access a portion of the cameras from off-site using some type of electronic device, right now we can access roughly half of them from off-site, but all of the cameras are recording video footage and being stored. We can go down and visit the access for the remainder of the cameras in the event that is needed.
Anybody have anything for the city manager?
On the camera issue, so when the rest of the cameras going to be in operational like they're supposed to be?
We, we're debating on whether to try and continue with a wireless relay signal between the two ends of the park, or whether it's more feasible to run a cable along the existing white holes to connect the two. Right now, basically, what we've got are some trees that are interfering with the signal at certain times, so we're debating on whether we want to trim those trees back or whether it makes more sense to run the cable along and ask HUB for a quote on what the cable cost would be if we were to put that in.
How long do you think it's going to be before we'll have those up and running? I mean, are we talking something like in the next two to three weeks so we can get that project finished up?
It just depends on when, when I get the quote and what the, if we decide to go with the cable, what HUB workload is as far as getting cable installed. But, but again, the cameras are recording, and the video is being stored, right now we can't access them. Like I can't sit here and access them from my phone like I can on the other side of the park.
Where are we at on the court, Council? I know we had the first reading, and you was going to check on that, and I think we're pushing a month now since we've asked for that, and I haven't seen anything come back to council.
Yeah, we, the court clerk had raised some questions about the wording and the ordinance, and so I sent that off to M Task to get some clarification, and so we're trying to make the wording with the litigation packs a little more clear, and would anticipate having that back for you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I've got one real quick. The, I know that we've had some people looking at, and the reason I'm asking this, I could ask all the time, I meant to ask you earlier, the, we're still working on the radio system downtown, the speaker system, right?
Yes.
And what we're looking at is putting something on each end that is sort of like what we got at Park?
We're looking at, looking at that as a possibility as opposed to trying to reconnect everything with the wiring.
We're going to have, we're going to have something by Christmas time.
If nothing else, we'll have the speakers we had before installed before then. The reason we were looking at the wireless system is because we already had a portion before we changed out the lights, we already had a portion of the area that wasn't working, and so we would probably have to run new wiring. So if we could go with the wireless system, it would be easier than pulling the new wire.
Any other questions? Thanks, sir. This time, we'll hear from council. Councilman Cook.
I don't really have anything at this time, thank you.
Councilman Johnson.
I don't have any, babe.
Councilman Russell.
I'd like to say congratulations to Chief Tapp. Wish some best luck to you.
Thank you. Councilman Wright, yes. Councilman Holly. Councilman Mead.
That's it.
I've got a couple of things. On our next workshop this month, first, to go ahead and start discussing our goals and objectives for the year, going to set our retreat date, so we can get started on that. Also, the city Harriman and businesses have went together with Harriman Utility Board. Harriman Utility Board for the last two years has done a trunk or treat in the back of their place. This will be the third annual. Well, this year, the city and the businesses downtown are joining with them, and we're going to have a trunk or treat for three blocks of Rome Street. We're going to block off on the 30th of October from 5:00 to 8:00, and there'll be trunk or treat. We're having our churches involved. Anybody who wants to get involved with it, they're involved, they just have to fill out the form, but we thought it'd be a good time for all of us to join together and give back a little bit. We're going to have cake walks, hopefully some hayrides, games. There's a free movie that night at the theater, hocus pocus. It starts at 7:00, so we're excited, looking forward to it. If you've looked throughout town here recently, you'll see that it's been decorated. Billy Joe Daniels put some minions out today down on Street, really looks good. I had Untied Hims one of the poles. I think he thought he was one there for a little bit, but, but anyway, I want to thank everyone that's been out and had a part of what's going on. We've been meeting, and there's some good stuff happening, and we're starting to work on Christmas stuff, but, but anyway, October the 30th from 5:00 to 8:00 downtown, bring your kids or just come down. Wear your costumes, adults, everybody. Just, just be mindful, there's going to be kids around as to what you wear, but wear your costume, come down, have a good time. And then, costume contest, ESM, you can get in. But there'll be costume contest, there'll be a lot going on. We'll have suppliers out starting this week, so we'll be able to see what's going on and be promoting to the schools and things. And in that, I want to say that we've been doing a community youth night twice a month on Monday nights, and then we've done a kids' night last Monday. We've done one of those once a month, and what we're trying to do is, is make it a safe zone for our young people to have a place to go. The Living Room Arcade downtown here is volunteer fair space, and there are games for free. We've been working with, with churches, with community leaders, everybody else, fire department, police department, rec department, councilman, everybody's come together to make sure that our young people have a safe place to go and enjoy themselves and not have to worry about drugs, fights, or anything else. They can go and just have a good time. So I want to thank everybody that's been a part of that. It has been overwhelming at the support that we've had from businesses and from people and from the young people. It's so crowded in there, you can't get in. So we've had to block off Rome Street for two of them to keep cars from coming out because we've had so many people show up. So we're trying to give more back to our young people and help them. It's not a city thing, it's a community thing, and I want to thank everybody that's been involved in it. That's all I got. I'll shut up. At this time, we'll go into new business. First item, discussing possibly approved first reading on ordinance 1018-01, an ordinance amending the zoning map of Harriman, Tennessee by rezoning property from R1 to C2. Motion to approve?
Yes, sir.
Motion, Councilman Mead, second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Russell. At this time, we'll discuss, everybody has a report. This is the property that you was talking about, if you want to give just a detail on what you're looking at doing.
So I actually brought some pictures because I knew that we'd be here, we're going to be at the property. So if you've got any questions on what you're actually trying to approve, you can see a view of the property I passed through. This is an actual blown-up view of the property, so you can see that the front portion of the property that I'm talking about is commercial. The back end is residential.
We've been working with, with churches, with community leaders, everybody else, fire department, police department, rec department, councilman, everybody's come together to make sure that our young people have a safe place to go and enjoy themselves and not have to worry about drugs, fights, or anything else. They can go and just have a good time. So I want to thank everybody that's been a part of that. It has been overwhelming at the support that we've had from businesses and from people and from the young people. It's so crowded in there, you can't get in. So we've had to block off Run Street for two of them to keep cars from coming out because we've had so many people show up. So we're trying to give more back to our young people and help them. It's not a city thing, it's a community thing, and I want to thank everybody that's been involved in it. That's all I got, I'll shut up. This time we'll go into new business. First item, discussing possibly approved first reading on ordinance 1018-01. An ordinance amending the zoning map of Harriman, Tennessee by rezoning property from R1 to C2. Motion to approve?
Yes, sir.
Motion of Councilman Lee, second.
Second.
Say for Councilman Russell. This time we'll discuss, everybody has a report. This is the property that you was talking about, if you want to give just a detail of what you're looking at doing.
So I actually brought some pictures because I knew that we'd be here, we would be at the property. So if you got any questions on what you're actually trying to approve, you can see a view of the property I passed through. This is an actual blown up view of the property, so you can see that the front portion of the property that I'm talking about is commercial. The back end is residential, but it's all the same property. This is the, what the actual office looks like, so it is an office building. I'm gonna be, on the back end, I'm gonna be building warehousing, storage units. The front end's approved for that, but the backyard isn't, so I'm trying to get the whole property approved. I've got pictures of the entire view around it if you want to see it.
Where is it located exactly?
A road and road. So once I show you a couple of my pictures, you'll-
Steel building, the Baptist Association.
Right. You'll get more of that.
Oh, I know, okay.
Should have probably had them made a little bit bigger for you, but you probably recognize the building.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's the actual building. And then I've got a picture of the views all the way around it, and a few businesses that's right beside me. Right next door to me is another company. I think that they're just a meeting company. I'm not really sure what they do there.
That's the lodge.
Right, the lodge. That's what you told me, I don't know what they do, but, and then right across the road there's, there's church. So there's other businesses right around me. Right down the road, there's a man that has a car lot. So there's not any homes that would be disturbed by me. There's actually a commercial lot right beside me, and there, there's a zone for warehousing. The only reason why I'm asking for this property is, one, it's a better price, it's already got an office building, it makes perfectly good sense to turn it into something. The way the city's set up, I'm pretty sure that right now I could actually operate this as a business, being a commercial. I just can't do anything in the backyard, so I'm asking that I get to include the backyard in my business. That's pretty much it.
What kind of warehousing you usually-
It'll be storage units. Reason why I say warehousing is because when you look in your zoning, it says that trying to ask for it to be rezoned, it approves warehousing, and then warehousing and storage units is what me and him spoke about would be the same thing. So I just say warehousing, so if you look under to make sure it'd be approved, it's the same, right? So I just did that so you guys would understand. So what I'm, the property that I'm actually looking at is right here, the green lines. So any neighborhood that's behind me is separated by, there's a, there's a big edge of woods, so there's no, there's no neighbors, no homes. Nobody will be bothering, and I'll be right next door to other businesses. And I'll do my units. However, I've never built storage units, so I'll come to you guys and you just tell me the way you want me to do it, permits, however.
The planning commission approved it. And like you said, it's got, there's a creek actually behind it, and that's where all the trees and woods are that separates from the house.
It's actually a pretty good sized creek too. Like from standing in the office building to that back end, you wouldn't know that there's even a neighborhood back there. They wouldn't even know I'm up front. Like you would have to specifically walk around there, but-
Only way they're gonna know you're up front is if you put storage units in and you let them get dilapidated like some of the others have.
No, sir. I actually, I'm a property investor in this town. I actually take ran down homes and turn them into nice homes. I've been doing it for the last seven years. Also, prior to that, I've owned 30 rental properties. None of my properties would consider me a slumlord. I don't let anything go to waste. And I sold them, so I'm not a landlord now, but I'm not in the business of just being a slumlord. I would keep them top notch. I actually have a further plan on how to take my storage units and get back towards Ron County, because when you were talking about kids, I have a kid, I'm a single father, so I'm looking at ways of every unit having a certain percentage to get back towards single parents. So there's a bigger plan in it other than units. I'm not in this to get rich off the business. I do want to build units, it'll be great for me, but it'll also help this town. Everything that I've done so far, I've found ways to get back. I just don't go through meetings, I just find people. But no, it won't, there won't be any rundown units, sir. They'll be top of the line.
One other good thing we know is that there's a house on the property to the side between the lodge and that, so that house is probably condemnable, and he's gonna be taking that house down.
Yeah, I'm, you just really helped me. I should have probably, I had that in my thoughts, but you all right, it is condemned actually. And it's non-reparable, so I'll be getting rid of that. It won't be there. My storage units will look a lot better than that. And eventually, the old office that I'm in is either gonna either be remodeled and look very nice, it'll be painted, fixed up, the bar will be torn down, and there'll be a new one built. So I'm only gonna help the property.
Any other discussion from counsel? Call the robe.
Gerald Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenny Me?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes. Motion carries. This is just the first reading. We will have a public hearing next meeting and the second meeting to discuss this. That is all on the agenda. City manager did ask me if I had anything put on the agenda, and I said no, which I, my mind probably wasn't working. I always have something I need to add, but I do have some appointments to some boards that I need to get filled. Managed it last month and didn't do this, so I'm asking to lay the agenda rule to appoint three different boards. Motion? Motion of Councilman Russell, second.
Second.
Councilman Cook, I'll favor I.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? The, the first board, the 911 board, which the previous chief Kenny Humphrey sat on, I'd like to appoint Fire Chief Ray Daniels in his spot to go on the 911 board. Motion, second. Motion of Councilman Lee, second. Councilman Wright, Councilman Lee.
Nope, so what a good choice.
Councilman Wright. Yes, saying good. Floor is open for discussion. Call the robe.
Gerald Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenny Me?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes. Motion carries. Also, the Harriman Housing Authority has an open for their resident. They have to have a resident that is on their board, and I got a recommendation from Ms. Amy Hall and Jason Schillens of Ms. Jennifer Northern to sit on their board. Motion.
I'll make motion.
Motion by Councilman Wright, say goodbye. Councilman Cook, Councilman Wright.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Cook. Floor is open for discussion. Call the robe.
Gerald Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenny Me?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes. Motion carries. The other one is the Harriman Utility Board. Like to put Councilman Lonnie Wright and resident down in that block. Motion. Motion by Councilman Russell, second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Cook, Councilman Russell.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Cook.
No.
Floor is open for discussion. Call the robe.
Gerald Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenny Me?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes. Motion carries. Don't forget Saturday, 3 to 5 at the Medieval Fair. Go out and get a taste of what they're gonna be doing, and don't forget their events through the month of October. And motion to adjourn. Motion, second. Second. Call the robe.
Aye.